I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor? Any opposed? We entertain a motion to accept the minutes for the December 16th, 2014 meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Any opposed?
Mr. President, before you go on to communication, Mrs. Winch, I'd like to say, and I don't see him here tonight, John Bacon, I'd like to thank him for, we put a couple of ceremonies together for the 60.
Very nice. 6061.
6061 Don't Run Team, they finished third in the state, and 6065 St. Joe High School Team, they finished fourth in the state. We put a little ceremony together for them, had a couple basketball games, had a big crowds and that, and I want to thank him for his help and his staff for helping me put it together. It went off pretty good.
Okay. Okay, actually, we're deviating from the agenda just a little bit. We're going to do our presentation from LJ Hart and Ms. Courtney Wegman and Sam Woodring.
Thank you very much for having us here this evening. I'm Courtney Wegman, a vice president with LJ Hart and Company. With me tonight is Sam Woodring, who I know has been here before. He is going to go through the packet, highlight some of the items within there. I know you guys have been through this before, so we'll make it short and sweet and entertain any questions that you have. If you wouldn't mind taking the binder clip off of the package just to make it easier going through it, to speed things up, that would be great.
Okay, like Courtney said, I will go, try and go quickly for you because you have been through this a few times now, but if you have any questions, just feel free to ask. So first, we have the rating packet. AA+ as part of the Missouri Direct Deposit Program. No surprises there. We go to the numbers next. Starting with page one, we have the debt service repayment schedule. You can see the third line under yield statistics, you have the average interest rate of 3.42%. The last three maturities there, all 4%. Those are the bonds that are being offered at a premium. If we go to the next page, page two, the second line under bid information, you have the re-offering premium. That's 400, that's going to produce $465,842 extra dollars for the district for projects that you may come across.
So selling some of the bonds at higher interest rates in return, the investors giving you more money upfront in order to use that for funding your project.
We go to page three, you can see the debt service to maturity and call. These bonds will have a 2020 call date. Your $10 million from last year had a 2019 call date, so another five-year call feature there. On page four, we have the sources and uses. This shows 10 million of bonds being issued, then you have the $465,000 of re-offering premium. Then after paying out all the cost of issuance, which includes, you know, the underwriting fee, bond council and all of that, you're left with $10,341,292.50 for the construction fund. Any questions on those numbers? All right, we'll go to page five, the spreadsheet here. Spreadsheet one, this is your existing situation now. This includes the 10 million Series 2015 that we're doing tonight, as well as the refunding that we did last month. As you can see, on the far right, you have the balances in blue, and then in the dark green on the far right, total fiscal year debt service payments. Those are, well, the balances are still very much above the payments because we've got that issuance for next year. Which takes us to page six. You can see the $8 million issuance in 2016. Balances still work with that without having to raise that 90 cent debt service levy. And if we go to page seven, you can see if you were to issue that 8 million with a premium in order to generate some extra funds next year, you could still do that, and those balances tie out very well with the total fiscal year payments.
So basically, the district is still in a very good situation financially, even with issuing this $10 million with some premiums, and even if you needed some additional money next year, you could issue those with premiums as well and still be able to keep your 90 cent debt service levy, so in line with the ballot from last year with the no tax increase.
All right, next we'll move on to the comp rate. If you look at the 2025 maturity and go across, Farmington's on the far left and bold there, sorry.
So this is just taking your financing and comparing it to other financings that are in the market right now to give you an idea of how do your rates compare to rates that are currently in the market? Again, things aren't going to be apples to apples because of timing differences, so if something was sold a month ago versus something sold a couple of days ago, there will be some fluctuations.
Right, and the Farmington rates are below, most everything issued in January, you see some of the December issuances there in purple and red. The rates have gone up a little since then, but very good rates here. Any questions on that? Next, we'll go to the closing procedures. This outlines kind of how things will happen on the closing day for the district to get their money, and that will be February 4th, so just a couple of weeks there. Next, we have the official statement. This is issued to all potential investors. Just outlines the details of the bonds and the Farmington School District so that they're aware of what they're potentially buying. Then we have the resolution, which will be seen by the board tonight. If we go to page one, in all caps section, that's just a summary of what's in the resolution, describes the project and how much we're issuing, 10 million. It also details the rates that we saw earlier in the numbers packet, as well as the call date, which we went over, which is March 1 of 2020. Any questions on the resolution? Okay, then we have the bank letter from US Bank. This is just an annual fee for the administration of the debt.
And it's the only ongoing fee related to the issuance of the bonds, so after the cost of issuance, you just have the $250 fee each year for, as Sam had mentioned, the administration.
And finally, we have the draft news release for the district. It hits on some of the things that it touched on, got the premium in there that the district can use for extra funds. It's also got the local support. We had very good local support here. We had Edward Jones purchasing $250,000, the New Era Bank with acquired $1 million, and First State Community Bank acquired $400,000 of these bonds, so very good there. And also hits on the call feature and all the positives of these bonds. Any questions?
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Same for others.
At this time, we entertain a motion.
I move to accept and approve the adoption of the resolution for the second dispersment of bond funds as recommended.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, now we are ready for our communications. Ms. Winch, Lincoln Elementary.
Tonight, I'd like to start off by recognizing our Hartland hero. For Lincoln Intermediate, we'd like to recognize Jason Buchanan, the manager of Hoods Home Discount Center. And if Jason, if you would come up, we'd greatly appreciate it. Jason, you know, when I was transferred to Lincoln, we had to bring somebody along with us because I needed my connection to Jason. No, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Jason and his staff at Hoods have been lifesavers for us many times. Not only have they made multiple donations of furniture, safety supplies, and time, they've also helped us with design layouts, product researching, and are fabulous with those last-minute rushes we sometimes have at Lincoln. You don't want to talk about that, Jason? Jason's here tonight with his wife Amanda, who is with us at Lincoln, his son Bryce Buchanan, I want to call you Bear, and Hudson Buchanan, who I want to call Charlie, because we all have nicknames there. Jason, one of those last-minute items is being rushed here right now, which is a plaque that you could not make for us, but Eric Shelton from the high school is making for Hoods for you to display in your store, because without local businesses like Hoods and people like you, we couldn't get things done like we do, and we truly appreciate that, and I know I can say that for the whole district. Okay? Thank you. Our next person that we would like to recognize is our featured teacher, Ms. Brandy Farrell. I get to do this again? No, we're thrilled. I know, I know. Last year, Lincoln, what am I trying to say? Brandy was Lincoln's featured teacher or Teacher of the Year and was also recognized as the District Teacher of the Year at the Centene Center. Students, parents, and colleagues alike take great pride and total confidence in describing Mrs. Farrell as an amazing teacher who provides a positive, friendly learning and working environment that helps every day end in a smile, and that is so true about Brandy. Parents specifically say she is an overcomer, a problem solver, an innovator, and a dynamic fifth-grade teacher. Her enthusiasm, love, and passion for teaching and her students show each day in her classroom. Mrs. Farrell works to inspire and impact all those she comes in contact with each day. Her work ethic and professionalism is also seen by her involvement in the building-level instructional practices inventory team, the data team, the character education team, as well as her position as president of the District Public Relations Committee and Community Teachers Association. Mrs. Farrell represents many of the individuals employed by Farmington R7 School District who make a positive impact on the learning environment of our students. However, today, she deserves to be the shining star of Lincoln. We are thankful she chooses to touch the lives of every student every day. And tonight, she is here with her son Aiden, and a blast from the past, Mr. Ron Farrell. Glad to have you guys here. Thanks, Brandy.
Thank you.
Yep.
Educational technology update, Mindy and the library staff.
We have a few things to pass out really quick, and if you have the app NearPod on a phone or device with you, you can follow along with us, and we've brought some devices ready to go for the board members so that you all can do this. Tonight is our turn to present for the librarians and all the things that they do with the library programs in the school. Each of them are going to speak just a little bit, and I'll let them introduce themselves as they go through their slides. So if you'd like to open your gift really quick, Mrs. Dillon is still passing those out, sorry. There's a theme to the gift, and that is that times they are changing, and they are changing in the LMC, the Library Media Center, and Mrs. Dillon has selected a few books for you all tonight. We'll have you open those up.
Should we say the rest?
Yeah, if you would like. We'll be frugal, environmentally friendly here. It's the old-school motif. These are books that have been weeded out of the middle school library because we're thinking that maybe they're not so relevant to our students anymore, so if maybe some of you could hold those up for the audience to see. We have the camcorder video book here, yes. So times are changing, and there are some things that do remain solid and the same in the LMC, and that is our librarians, our library media specialists, but as times have changed, while they're still doing their same roles as librarians with helping students develop a love for reading, that's a dandy there, the complete book of roller skating. One needs to borrow that, Ms. Howard.
You might need a book of flirting, you don't need to hold that.
So while our librarians still do work to develop a love of reading with our students, they've had to start wearing a few different hats in regards to educational technology, and that's why we're presenting here together. So if you would open up the NearPod app on your iPad, and there's a code that you'll type in, it's G, it doesn't have to be case-sensitive, G X U E R, G X U E R.
You're going to go join the session.
Join the session, G X U E R. NearPod is one of those apps that our librarians have learned they've become tech leaders in their building and trainers.
G X H.
G X U E R. And we have it up here on the screen for the audience to see. You're going to get the same experience that the board would get on their individual devices. So you can put your name in after you're in, just first name and no optional, G X U E So NearPod is one of the tools that we're using in our classrooms, kindergarten all the way up through the 12th grade, and our librarians have been trained on how to use this, and they've helped people in their building. So a lot of times now, the librarians are the go-to people for the ed-tech help in the building in addition to their library roles, and they're going to talk about their library roles. So we can see that all the people are signed on. The first library that we're going to talk about, Ms. Smith, could not be here tonight. She's the librarian for Truman Kindergarten Center, but when we talk about many hats, she's also the counselor for Truman Kindergarten Center. So she sees all the students for their counseling and for their library needs, and so she's also taken on the tech role as well, and she's one of the tech representatives for Truman Kindergarten. She's done some fabulous work with the kiddos there. They did recently a project through the library where they helped get some items together for children in hospitals, so she's done a fabulous job there. Next, I'm going to turn it over to our elementary librarians, Mrs. Womack.
If you're not old, part of the beauty of NearPod is that you can be anywhere and deal with it, but I got to be close enough to read it. I'm Donna Wommack, and I'm the librarian at Washington Franklin. And we just kind of went through the day we got together last and started listing everything we did. This becomes kind of a little boring and not so entertaining, but we have a lot to cover. One of the difference between elementary and upper level is that we all have assigned classes. So we started off with, we have scheduled class time for every classroom in the school, grades one through four. We offer additional book checkout times for students before school, after school, and during the day. You know, many times they come down at 3:05, I'm like, have duty at 3:10, come on! But it's always exciting when the kid's trying to get in because they want to get a book, because unlike the book of flirting, there are several that they still can't wait to get their hands on. We also have students for extended time each week, so for collaboration, for the grade-level teachers and that type of thing. Like, every school's different, but our school, we have them like for an hour and 20 block time, so these teachers can get together and collaborate with Mindy, meet with Shanna, meet with Allison, and then have a couple of weeks in that five-week rotation where they meet with each other. So not only do librarians do that, all your extension teachers in the schools provide that. Class time is more than book selection, but it's very important, and when you get to be our age, you know what you like. You have to roll back and think about what it's like to be six, and some of them, you know, cannot read yet, and as they begin to learn to read, and then you try to teach them what is appropriate for them to choose, what they can practice learning on, and I don't know how many hearts I've broken, when a six-year-old wanted to read Diver, Wimpy Kid, and I'm like, not yet, honey, it's just a little too big for you. But book selection is important. In addition, we teach many topics, including digital citizenship, which is taking on a huge role. Minnie's been setting up our fourth graders with Google accounts this spring, and I see it really taking a change this next second semester. We also teach literature, text components, reference sources, and genres of literature. We have monthly tech nights, which for my building is mostly reading counts. We really encourage parents to come in and read with their kids, you know, and I love sports too, but if you can go do soccer two nights a week, and you can do this, come read with your kid for a couple hours on a weeknight. So that's gone over pretty well for several years now. They are allowed, if they want to, work on Typing Agent or any of the programs available to them, but it tends to be more of a reading night. So that's me.
With NearPod, as Mrs. Beavers is coming up, or Mrs. Ali? I moved your slide to the next, so that's one of the things with this particular tool is that the teacher moves the students on when they're ready for them to move on instead of the student advancing through the slides too fast and that sort of thing. It keeps you on pace, and it's right there in front of you instead of you having to look up to the screen. Is this okay? Sure.
I'm Debbie Beavers, I'm the library media specialist at Jefferson, and we work with students, teachers, and sometimes parents on helping students find books on their reading level and interest to them, and a lot of that takes place when we have the tech nights after school, usually from like four to six in the evenings, and we're able to work with parents one-on-one and find books that the kids are interested in, and explain the Lex files and reading levels and point system to them, and show them, you know, on our sites where they can find books that are reading counts books, so that they can find books on their own as well, foster the love of reading through Read Alouds and support the state book awards such as the Shomi and the Mark Twain Books, and still share in teaching Truman students currently three sections as well as our own home station buildings right now.
I'm Johnny Lilly, the library media specialist at Roosevelt, and we are currently serving as tech support in each of our buildings, and we attend extra training so that we're ready to help our colleagues when they come across a problem or need some troubleshooting as far as programs go. We serve as presenters of technology on PD days. We manage student accounts in Destiny, Scholastic Achievement Manager, MyBigCamp is discovery education and typing agent, so anytime there's a new student, all this information has to be put into the computers, and we take care of doing that for each of the students. And then during the 2014 and 15 year, we are now supervising keyboarding training for third and fourth grade students in addition to having them for library classes.
Oh, and there's more.
Can you skip us? We have one more. I think she kind of spoke on the SRI, Debbie spoke on the SRI and the reading counts.
I'm just looking. They can read in front of them. And it sadly, the last bullet on the page is kind of what we used to do. It comes down to one little thing. We managed the library, which was a full-time job, through book selection, acquisition, collection management, maintenance, and budget administration, and all that stuff is kind of on top of it now. So it's a large hat, maybe a 10-gallon hat.
Next up, we have Mrs. Gann from Lincoln.
Hey, I'm Kate Gann, I'm the library media specialist at Lincoln, and as you've already heard, we do wear lots and lots of hats, and while we still try to kind of add some of those on, we've had to tackle technology. That's been a big part of the last, especially this last year. And so while we keep love of learning and reading at the core of everything we do, this last year was kind of exciting for us. I was trying to think of what hat would describe Lincoln, and at first I was thinking, okay, construction, because it's a building year, we're all trying to learn some new tools, and to, you know, to teach our 21st century learners, and so that's kind of what I was thinking, when we have some new programs that we're using, like MyBigCampus, Hipara, NearPod, some of those things. But then after I started really thinking about it, I'm like, no, I think it's a helmet, because our building has really tackled one-to-one this year, and I am so proud. I'm shocked what the kids know already, just we're only halfway through, and what they have learned and what our staff has learned, so I think it would be the helmet for us, so.
Thank you. All right, and Mrs. Dillon?
Okay.
Middle school.
I decided to do kind of a day in the life of a librarian and the different hats that we wear, and I had a really good time doing this. I am a little bit more brave in the pictures than I am actually doing it for you, so I have pictures. So the proud presenter hat was the first one. Obviously, we do some presentations in classes. I go into classes a lot and talk about research and things like that, and teach kids how to use the library website and whatnot, and just any time the teachers need things. The next one, my picture's there, it says, "When you mustache a question, ask a librarian." The psychic researcher is another one, because kids will come to you knowing kind of what they want the end result to be, but have no idea how to get there in between, and kids talk in text nowadays, so it's like, I want that. Okay, that would be, and then sometimes I've gotten the answer before, the blue one. I'm like, the blue one, here it is! No, I have no idea what you're talking about. Do you want a fiction book, a nonfiction book, are you doing research, whatnot? The wayward traveler hat, another thing that librarians do is obviously promote the love of reading. So the techno boss hat is, we have to be techno bosses, we have to be really strong in our understanding of technology and being able to present that to staff and, you know, saying, "You can do it," as well as kind of enforcing the technological roles and make sure everybody is using the technology appropriately, so that was my gangster one. The efficient organizer hat, I can't even remember who touched on it, somebody, oh, it was Johnny, touched on all of the accounts that we manage as new kids are created, and it's about a 30-minute process to create the five or six different accounts, as well as our kids' drops and getting rid of those and those kinds of things. In addition to at the middle school this year, we still have, we still have Chromebook carts and making sure that all of those get to the right places and the teachers can use those as many hours as possible, and arranging those so that teachers have the technology that they want. The party starter hat is the next one, because that's another job of the librarian that doesn't oftenly get mentioned, and especially at the middle school, I'm kind of carrying on in Ally's tradition, I guess, of being a decorator and having the library be a comfortable place where staff can meet, or where we can have really professional meetings, or even just classes can come in and have a little bit more space to spread out and do like collaborative lessons, so. And then, this one doesn't pull up exactly, I won't, but that's all right. This is supposed to be a series of slides where the bar coder attacks me, because that's one thing that we do, is actually check out books, and the bar coder and I have a love-hate relationship with my zapper. And then the book integrity enforcer hat, teaching kids, kind of along with our character that we're really establishing at the middle school, teaching kids to be responsible with their books, like they have lockers, so not leaving them in there for three months, and as well as, you know, turning them in on time and things like that, so that's one mean job we have to do. And then, this was the job that I really love to do, which is actually get to be within the shelves of the books and actually looking at what we have in our collections and updating things and shelving books and whatnot because the love of literature. So that is a small part, actually, of what we do now, but it's a part that I really enjoy, so.
Thank you. Next up, we have?
Okay, I'm Kristy Scott, the library media specialist of the high school. Again, we have really become just the technology hub for staff members and students. Again, we have almost 1,200 students, and I help about 100 staff members. This year alone, I've created 136 new accounts, so that's with email and MyBigCampus and Glockster accounts, and that with creating the email accounts, MyBigCampus, Glockster, when a student does leave our district, I have to deactivate those accounts too, so that's fun. So far, in the first semester, we've had over 90. So far, in the first semester, we've had over 9,000 visits to the library, and it does not include, does not include the classroom visits when our ELA groups come in. Would you go back? I just want to show them the tables real quick. Again, with talking about technology, these were implemented this year. We have four charging stations. The students love them. They're placed up against the wall. There are students sitting at them every single day, so they can, sometimes we have single students that are doing just independent work, but we also have group collaborations that happen daily. Okay? Another big thing that we started last February was gentrification. So what we did to the library was, instead of going by the author's last name, we said, "What's this book about?" So we picked up a book, and we said, "Hmm, this is a mystery. This is a love story." So we color-coded it, and it took from February to May to get that done. And then we came in over the summer and then kind of rearranged, so every book came off the shelf. About 10,000 books there. We also painted, and you can see our color coding here. Very simple and easy for the students to find. They love it. Absolutely no complaints. And most of the time, I remember, they say, "Well, where's the book if I stay?" Well, it's right over here in the green section. Okay? So we can easily tell them. We have, you know, color-coded charts and all that. So this is our new setup, again, with the charging tables, and again, just trying to make it just a fun place for staff and students to be. We did implement a new scanner system. They would try to get away with not signing it. So that 9,500 is probably not a really accurate number, because they would, yeah, I signed my name. Sometimes a big X is their name. So now that we've implemented the scanners, they just, they click in the box, scan their badge, and they go on their way. So in December, for a two-week period, we had almost 2,000 students sign in, in that two-week period of time. So you know that they weren't all signing it before. Again, during a Monday, Wednesday, Friday, when we have, we're really active, we can average about 125 students. Tuesdays and Thursdays are designated reading days, so they can still come in and take tests, but we don't want them to find a book, because they could find a book for 30 minutes and not read. So we have eight ELA teachers. That's okay. And again, at the end of the six-week period, typically about two weeks before, we've got students rushing in there because they haven't taken their quizzes yet and they need to finish up with stuff. So I was, as I was looking through my logs, there was one day where we had about 425 visits to the library. So that's quite a bit of students to help and to speak with. And again, we do several of the other things that the other librarians have talked about. Again, we kind of just, we try to promote, I work with Ms. Lamont's, and we do an attendance reading celebration. So again, we don't want to just, you know, praise those students who come to school and who read. So we offer a party together. We do a spring and fall book fair. And again, we too promote the state reading awards. We have the Gateway Club, and so we rarely have books there, because the students are always checking those out. And again, overall, we just try to promote the love of reading, and we have fun doing it. I don't know if anybody has, I have not watched this show, but we have posed our faces there, so.
So I would just like to thank all the librarians, because they have done a wonderful job this year in taking on the new roles that we've asked with them with educational technology. They are tech leaders in their buildings. They're my go-to people for ed tech in the buildings, and they do a fantastic job. I'm having a fabulous time right now, working with the elementary librarians, as our fourth graders get their Google accounts this week. It's their Google birthday, and it's been quite, quite a good time so far, and they've been troopers through it all. So thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present tonight, and thank you to our librarians.
Good job.
Oh, and the iPad.
Especially my... I want a reading counts quiz on that when you're done.
No kidding.
When I was in school, you had to handwrite them.
Mr. Kraus, construction update.
Yeah, that kid's a pain right there.
Got a, I got a quick update of projects we have going on. Weather has not deterred them too much. A few days last week, it was a little cold. Ground was a little frozen. They did have to pull off the job a few days that it was too frozen to even dig, so things have thawed out, which made a little bit more of a mess, but it's back on, back to where they're getting some things done. Early childhood, we had our first weekly meeting today, going over a few things. We're about to have all the playground equipment taken out. There's a phone line issue that we had to deal with today, or they would have started digging today. I would think they're going to be able to reroute that in the next week or so, but they'll be able to work around it until then, so it's not going to slow anything down. So early childhood should break around, hopefully tomorrow, start digging footings, doing their overdig, and then putting the tailings back in. So the next few weeks, we should start seeing, or the next week or so, should start seeing some difference there at the early childhood. East campus, if you've been by Roosevelt, the footings have been dug. They've tied into the, into the building. Some of the, some concrete's been poured. They were pouring footings today. They poured some last week, so it's moving along. Same excavation guy is working at early childhood, so the days he's not working at early childhood, he'll be, he'll have somebody working over at middle school to start digging those footings at the middle school. So things are moving along at all three of those projects. Anybody have any questions about anything that's going on with those, those three? LED lighting, I was hoping to have a recommendation for the board at this meeting, but we're at a point where I've had a couple of, one of the maintenance guys, electricians, has been trying a couple of the different fixtures that were similar, that one company was trying, wanting us to try. Didn't like those as well as he liked the first one, the Atlas. The Phillips was a little, took a lot longer to install. Quality-wise, they're about the same. Price-wise, they're about the same, so we're getting, trying to get a price on those. So didn't have that ready. I think we could save a little money by going with the Atlas and also time, so that's why we didn't get those in. We've been working with Meyer Electric also. They're going to change their fixtures to match our exterior lighting, so all of our exterior lighting should match with our new projects also.
So that will also save us money on...
Looking at about three- to four-year payback on all of our LED lighting, so hopefully, you know, we start to see that payback pretty quickly on utilities. But I will have a recommendation for the lighting in February, for the February board meeting. Cameras, cameras at the high school, pretty well. Everything interior at the high school has been, is up and running. Lot better, a lot better video. You can track it a lot faster. You can see more cameras at once. You can, you got a lot more storage for the recordings, a lot easier to find the storage. You can follow multiple cameras at the same time, so that you can see kids coming in and out when you're looking for, when you're hunting for things, which is usually what they're using those cameras for, so I think that was a big upgrade.
How long will you keep them? Like, do we have like a one-month rollover, or is it a longer timeframe? Or is it...
How long do we keep the recording?
Yeah.
The recording should store up to a year, I think, is, with the new, with this new system. It can, yeah. I think it's...
You can pull them off. If you need to pull one off, you can pull them off instead of the site separately. So if you have an incident that they're investigating, you can pull that video off.
And then save it.
And store it as long as you need to.
Okay.
But those will store, I mean, they store a lot of them.
Yeah, they're pretty good size, aren't they?
A long time.
Yeah, the old system was only a week, roughly, so certainly improved.
So now he's working on the exterior of the high school, the main building. Since there's not a lot going on, down by the track and stuff, he's going to hold off on that and start working on middle school, getting the middle school up to date. Hopefully, some of the equipment that we pulled out of high school is still usable, and we're going to use it at the middle school and get those, those hallways all covered, and the exterior of the building at the middle school. And then also a few places at the elementaries, the playgrounds, and the parking lots on the exterior. So let's move along. We had a meeting today, a few meetings today, but one about the shop renovation. Had a new updated plan. Looks like about, I think we're about where we need to be for, through the revisions. It's a good plan for the tech area. I think it flows a lot better than maybe the original one and some of the ones we've worked on in between. It's not exactly where we want in budget, but we're still got some tweaking to do, and hopefully we'll get as close to budget as we can. I don't know if we can get it to where we expected, but it's going to be within reason. Let's see if that's me. No? Yes? Dang it! Quit fiddling in my pocket. I'm not wearing...
And we have that on camera.
We do. I'm just saying.
We're going to store it up to a year.
And that will be stored for more than a year.
All right. Librarians were good, a good comedian, and I think that's pretty good, too. Weren't expecting that. Anyway, that took a little pressure off me. The shop, I think it's a good revision. I think they, it's going to be a good functioning space for the money that we're going to spend there.
Did you see that updated?
He is making the changes. This is the first day he had it. Actually worked on it until like 10:30 last night, so we could have this meeting with, at the high school. Hopefully, within the next week or so, he'll have the revisions we talked about today, because we did take out a few things that will save a little bit of money, and changed a few things on some windows and some doors, but...
We hope by mid to late week, he'll have the finalized plans, and then we'll go ahead and let, let Dr. Hostetler share that with his staff and make sure that they are good with some of the changes that have been made. But it's going to be, I mean, compared to the space now, which, it's not unusable, but it's certainly...
It doesn't function. I mean, you got to walk through different classrooms. To get to other classrooms...
An equated would be a positive for that space now, and it's going to be a very usable space. It's going to give us more instructional room, and it's going to be up to date, you know, for what we actually need to use the space for. So it's going to be a, it's going to be a great space. Yeah, we'll be sharing that with, with you guys as soon as we get that, and then also with the instructors, which is the important piece.
Bus loop. Hopefully, moving forward, we're drafting a letter to the city. Hopefully, we'll have a, an answer from them on a permit. I think we've talked to the neighbor that was affected with the stormwater issue that the city's worried about. I think we're on the same playing field, and I think they understand where we're at. I think they feel safe with what we have, so hopefully the city will go ahead with what we have. Engineers feel comfortable with it. The neighbor feels comfortable with it, so hopefully we can get moving on that and getting permits going pretty soon. Also been working on getting some estimates on future roofing and some HVAC for the summer. We're going to look at, we are looking at upgrading Lincoln's HVAC this summer, getting rid of all the through-the-walls. Also, Jefferson, getting out of the boiler system at Jefferson, and then at the high school pod area, getting out of the window air conditioners and heater, heaters, and also at the high school front, office, office section. So, and then all those, those same areas, getting the roofing updated at the same time. So we've got some, a couple of different contractors working on proposals to give us an idea on budget, see where we're at on those. But early feedback from them looks better than where we were, where we were thinking earlier, so.
Yeah, we think it'll certainly help us bidding those out in February, even March, potentially, rather than bidding those out in May or June, like it was May, when we did that last year. So we're looking forward to better numbers.
And looking at doing the, them doing a build and construct on their own without having to go through an engineering firm, just on the projects like this one we're updating. I think that's all I have. Anybody have any question on any construction?
Over at early childhood, how did the fencing off the construction area and leaving playground space come out? Okay.
It's, you're talking about what we have now, what we're going to have. It's a smaller space, but it's, I think it's going to be, it's going to flow well, and we've talked about, we went to visit a couple of early childhoods, and those spaces were very small, actually, and they service a lot more kids. I think they have a lot bigger, I mean, especially Ladue, and their playground space was a lot smaller than ours. But I think we can make it work, and there's some neat things that they did that I think we could do and stay within budget and still have a great space for them to play in. But it's, it's just smaller, but we have, we have a lot more space than either of the places we looked at.
Even, honestly, even the condensed playground that we'll have during construction is ironically bigger than the spaces they had. It's just how they use their space, and I think getting some of those ideas was important from that trip.
Any other questions?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down to discussion and action items. Does anybody have anything on any of those discussion items that you would like to share? If not...
On the, on the construction bills, I've got a question on that. On Brown Mowers Payment Number Six on their district doors and everything, is this the last payment for tho, that, or do we still have some more?
Probably the final.
That was the final. Okay. Are we completely satisfied that all the doors are fixed and they're...
They have, they have, anything we've asked them to work on, they've come back and worked on.
Right, I understand that, but what I'm saying, if we make this final payment, are we, the doors fixed? Are they fixed?
We still have a warranty.
We have warranty on them, and they'll come back and work on it. It's not, by us paying them does not free them of any...
Issues if they arise.
I don't think that they're going to, I mean, they're going to...
Okay. What I'm saying, are they, are they, right now, are we satisfied they're fixed? Do we have any, do we have any issues where some of them aren't fixed or anything, but where they're going to have to come back? And that's, that's what I'm asking, are, are they fixed?
We have very few issues in the last month that we've had to deal with.
Okay.
And most of those are from existing hardware that has been upgraded by putting new cords and changed the lock, but it hasn't, it's not new hardware. So we're, we are having issues. The only issues that I've had in this month, I think, are all to do with existing hardware.
Our, our existing stuff. Okay, that's what, that's what I'm asking. That's what I'm asking. Right, I'm just, you know, I mean, they, they did the job, I just, you know, and I understand there's something may break or something, they'll come back and fix it, but what I'm, you know, what they did is done, and we're satisfied with it. That's, that's what I'm asking, okay.
And I would hope, in the future, that you wouldn't bring that to us unless it is that one. Thank you, sir. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. If not, I would entertain, we've already approved D from that list when LJ Hart's representative was here. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve items C, E, F, and G.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve items C, E, F, and G. All those in favor? None opposed? And then for item A, the regular bills?
I move to approve the regular bills with the removal of max in construction. Those bills, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve all regular bills except max in construction. All those in favor? None opposed?
Now I move to pay max in construction.
Second.
A motion and a second to pay max in construction. All those in favor? No abstain.
I would move to approve the construction bills for the month of January, excluding max in construction.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve construction bills minus max in construction. All those in favor?
I would move to pay max in construction, construction bill for January.
Can I ask, I want to make a statement. I'd ask a question to Don and Mark on, on that. I just want to make sure everybody clear what I was asking, that we made one payment, and the second payment we're making, the $41,000, it was more than what we showed as a bid on, on one, but there was, apparently there was another RFP out there.
No, it wasn't. I mean, we both approved the same night. I mean, we both approved the same night. We have two RFPs. One was for parking lot repair and maintenance, which is all the ceiling painting of, of the existing parking lots. Then we had track, I'm sorry, the track was actually in that part. And the new asphalt, Truman, new asphalt at Lincoln was in, was in a separate RFP. So the total of the two RFPs came up to about $137,000 that was approved. Total we're paying is about $133,000 because we're under, we were under at the track at the middle school. Square footage wise, came out less than what we expected.
Right.
To keep it flat, we had squeezed down a little bit.
Yeah. I just wanted to bring that, what my quest, I had a question or anything. So...
It was either one RFP and you didn't see...
I didn't, I couldn't find the other RFP and everything. That's what I'm asking and everything. So.
Do you have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to pay the construction bills to Max and Construction. All those in favor? I abstain. At this time, I would entertain a motion to go closed session.
I move to adjourn to closed session to discuss personnel pursuant to 610.021, paragraphs 1, 3, 13, and 14.
Second.
Barnes?
Yes.
Han?
Yes.
Kane?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Solomon?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.